Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty Town of Danvers School Committee Meeting. This is David Thompson, Chair of the Danvers School Committee. As you will see, we are still in hybrid mode for our school committee meetings. My colleagues and I, along with the administrative team for the Danvers Public Schools, and a few invited guests are attending this meeting in the multipurpose room at the Holton Richmond Middle School. We're doing so in keeping with the governor's orders related to the open meeting law and keeping social distancing in mind in order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID- nineteen virus. Like our last meeting, because there was no fair way to determine who would be allowed to attend and who would not due to space limitations, we were advised by legal counsel not to invite the public to attend in person. Again, this does not mean that your voices have not and will not be heard. However, we do have a change in the way people can comment. In the past, we have been promoting the email info@danvers.org. The intention of that email was to be able to share the questions and comments publicly, just like they would have been had the person had the opportunity to ask their question in person at a meeting. Since our last meeting, we have learned that not everyone wanted their questions or comments to be shared publicly. Therefore, we have two emails. The first is publiccomment@danvers.org for all questions and comments that will become public record. The second is info@danvers.org, which is the one we had been using for people that have questions or comments but don't want them included as part of the public record. So again, if you want your questions or comments included in the public record, it's publiccomment@danvers.org. If you do not want them included, please continue emailing to info@danvers.org. Like in the past several weeks, and I will double check with Dr. Dana on this, the FAQ document regarding the opening of schools, if any new questions come in, will be updated after tonight's meeting and posted on the website sometime tomorrow. Is that correct?
Yes.
Excellent. All right, I will now call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Danvers Public Schools is a dynamic community of independent learners dedicated to respect, responsibility, creativity, and the pursuit of academic and personal excellence. This meeting is being recorded for broadcast by Danvers Community Access Television. Is there anyone else in our giant audience recording? There is not. So we'll move on to information from the superintendent.
Thank you. This evening, we'll begin with our school reopening and a presentation with Mary, Keith, and myself to give the overview of what has been happening since our last meeting. And then we'll get into the new business after that that talks about some of the items that we need to accomplish for their opening of schools. So we have a presentation. Mary has it up there for us. The Danvers Public Schools, an equity-seeking district, and we want to share more about that tonight with you. We did share many of these slides with our faculty and staff on opening day at the beginning of September, which we were able to share what our goals are for the district. We'll do the same thing this evening. The more formal piece where we have our school council goals will come at our October meeting. So for this evening, we would like to give you updates since the August twenty-fourth meeting with our district priorities. We will then turn it over to Keith, who will talk about the physical safety and the supports for our students. Mary will then talk about the SCL and the equity for our district with the professional development in the instruction, and also how we've been preparing for the first day of school. And then I'll finish up with our next steps for our districts. And again, we continue with working together for all of our students. This visual and looking to be an equity-seeking district as our vision, that begins with having a safe and supportive learning environment for our students, which has three major components: the physical safety for our learning environment, the emotional safety, and the equitable learning environment. So again, the SCL work where we're doing, the physical safety of our learning environment, and then the equity in our instruction. With that, our strategic plan looks at three areas in that if we promote a safe and healthy learning environment that is conducive to high academic achievement for all students, that if we provide engaging learning experiences that allow for students' voice and choice, and that we believe that all students can and will learn to their highest potential, then the students of the Danvers Public Schools will become productive, responsible, caring citizens of the global community and achieve their definition of success. So that is the part of our vision statement. I read it every year at graduation, that we are all working together so that way our students will achieve their definition of success. So with that, at this time, oh, there's one more piece here. Thank you. We have our four core values of caring, quality, commitment, and collaboration. As we work toward this together, courageous caring is really looking at that next step for us of how do we define the caring as we move forward into this year that not only do we have the healthcare pandemic, but really looking at equity, racial justice for all of our students in working in our Danvers Public Schools. So with that, there are four areas that we will continue as we define courageous caring. The belief about each child's ability to succeed, that we will focus on the SCL for sense-making, beginning with our adult SCL that we've been working on throughout the time with teachers and staff members before students arrive this week, that all adults have the responsibility, that all of us are working together, that we all have that responsibility for courageous caring for our students. And the psychological safety, that we need to listen to each other and speak up for our vision to be a reality. Okay. So with that, we're going to begin at the level with the physical safety first before we begin moving into the SCL and the equity. Keith?
So again, a lot of this information is what we reviewed at previous meetings with you, but we wanted to provide a summary for all of our families. We are working on a protocol document for our families that will be posted to our website sometime tomorrow that will go through a lot of the different protocols for students' return to school. They go in conjunction with the family forums that we had, as well as some videos that will be released at the elementary level over the next couple of days. So social distancing, keeping students six feet apart at all times unless there's another physical barrier as outlined by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as acceptable. So for example, the use of Plexiglas to separate students in the cafeteria or in individual workspaces with teachers. Masks are required for all students pre-K to twelve and for all staff at all times without exception. We did, in our FAQ, continue to update that document to say that there's no valves allowed in masks, that they must be ear-luoped and not the gaiters, as those gaiters have been shown not to be as effective, as well as that if due to medical reasons, a face shield is needed, that a neck drape is required to go with the face shield if there's a medical need, as face shields are not alternatives to masks. Sanitizing and hand washing. There'll be sanitizer at all of our entrances and exits, as well as within each of our classrooms or workspaces where students and staff will be working. Our HVAC systems, DPW has been working through making sure that we do preventative maintenance on all of those systems throughout the summer, completing checklists and inspections, working on filter replacement timelines. They're currently putting together some educational documents about how each school's HVAC systems work as they're all slightly different based on the age of the rooms, the age of the buildings. Air purifiers are being added into our COVID-designated rooms. Our school nurse offices that don't have windows are other educational spaces that has been deemed important to continue to utilize that do not have windows that operate. So we've worked on ordering those and having them on hand as we start the school year. As I just mentioned, each school does have a COVID-nineteen designated room. So if a student or staff member is to experience symptoms, this is the space that they would be housed in until they can be dismissed home to their parent and have the further testing done. If these spaces are utilized, they will be then closed down until there's a deep cleaning and disinfecting completed in those space to ensure safety. Cleaning and disinfecting, each classroom has been provided with disinfectant and paper towel. Nightly cleaning will take place in all of the buildings, including disinfecting of high-touch surfaces and electric static cleaning in each of the classrooms. On Wednesdays and Saturdays, there'll be an additional deep cleaning done in all of the spaces between the cohorts that we can continue to mitigate the risk to our physical learning environment. We've really been trying to move away from using the word "safe." It is a safe environment, and we're continuing to work to make it the safest possible, but it's really about how do we continue to mitigate the risk. So you hear that we've changed some of our dialogue to that as we continue to move forward, as we work through making sure that we're using the latest terminology and the most effective terminology. Personal protective equipment, we do have PPE on hand for all of our staff members. It was distributed, it's Monday, so late last week. I was going to say earlier this week, but all of the staff does have PPE. We do have a backup supply available in central office should any staff member needs it. And we are working with individual requests based on what their individual circumstances are. So if you're in a learning center, you may require an additional level where you might have to be hands-on with the student depending on what their learning disability is, or if you're working in a preschool where you're working with younger students. So we are taking individual requests. So now, jumping more to the district level and more of a student focus to a certain extent. Transportation, it has been prioritized based on distance. As of today, we're continuing to get requests, and we do have some limited space availability left, but every family that's wanted to ride the bus has been given a seat on the bus. So we're happy to report that that did work out, and we'll continue to work through that. For special education, we continue to work with families around the effectiveness of transporting their own children, which is often the safest environment and reimbursing them for mileage if the transportation is in their IEP. Technology and Chromebooks. We do have our order scheduled. It's now scheduled to be received during the month of October. There has been a little bit of press coverage around this. This order was actually placed in late May, early June, right after town meeting approved the financing. There has been an embargo on the national level due to some supply chain issues, and that's why there's been a delay in this. This is something that schools across the country are all dealing with. To date, as of today, every student who has requested a Chromebook has a Chromebook. So we did say that we're going to prioritize based on need. Every student one through five and every student six through eight all got a Chromebook in a one-to-one environment. Students in nine through twelve, again, everybody who's requested one to date has one, and then every kindergartner to date who has requested one has one. When these devices come in in October, we'll move to a full one-to-one model in kindergarten as well as distribute the brand-new devices to the high school, which is their year in the cycle to receive new devices. We are looking for insurance for all students in grades one through twelve. So the idea behind this now is that all students bring their devices home on a daily basis so that way they're able to have it for hybrid learning as they transition back and forth between the models. We are excited that we've partnered with the Danvers Recreation Program and the YMCA to create two different remote learning academies for students to participate in. So the YMCA's program is actually running five days a week where students can go and attend if they're in a full remote model or if they're in a hybrid, depending on their schedule. And then the Danvers Recreation Program is actually running out of the Vi Gym, and that is meeting either Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday, depending on what your hybrid schedule is, as a spot for students to come and complete their online learning, as well as have some other structured activities during break time or asynchronous time so that they can remain physically active and balance what that day looks like. I would have to confirm about the YMCA program, but I know the Danvers Recreation Program still does have space availability. So if there's families in need, please reach out to Nick Ambien or Dave Mountain in the Recreation Department for participation in that meeting. Tomorrow morning at ten AM, actually, we have our annual safety meeting. We do this each year before the school year starts with police, fire, DPW, and this year, the Board of Health. We review everything from the safety drills that we do to, you know, security checks, to locking doors, all of those different components. So we'll be having that meeting tomorrow, and again, Mark Herlier from the Department of Public Health will be an important part of that, and he's been invited to that meeting. DESI and DPH, as of the end of last week, released a mobile rapid testing program. So this program will be available to districts who are experiencing outbreaks within their schools. There are certain thresholds that need to be met, but we can call and request that they bring the testing here to Danvers if there is some sort of outbreak that we experience as a district. For enrollments, we continue to monitor our enrollments. We have seen a slight uptick in our homeschooling proposals and some deferrals of kindergarten students who are waiting to start kindergarten until next year, when their children may turn six and hopefully the learning environment looks slightly different than it does this year. Through today, we've been able to still accept and work with families if they're choosing to alter their learning mode, learning model, that they chose during the survey in August. As of today, we really are asking families that have not received their request to please give a shot to what they signed up for, whether it be hybrid or full remote, and then we'll look at them during one of those natural breaks to make transitions. We were hoping it would be binding in August, but obviously, we're trying to work with all of our families. Up through today, we were able to meet requests from various families. Food services. So historically, the district has operated under the National School Lunch Program, which is really a behind-the-scenes piece that says that you need to have free and reduced lunch applications for children to receive free meals. For the two thousand and twenty, twenty-one school year, at least to start, we're going to be operating under the seamless summer option. So again, these are just kind of educational jargon, USDA behind-the-scenes terms, but there's been a waiver from the USDA to provide universal free lunch for all families in Massachusetts to start the year. So we will not be charging any student for their basic meal that they receive at school. If they're looking to purchase a lunch, we will still have our à la carte purchases available. So if they want to buy an extra milk, they want to buy a snack, they want to buy a water. And the state has indicated that this program is starting effective our first day of school, but will run until the end of the calendar year currently or until funds are no longer available. So there's been no appropriation at the federal level to fund this, and it's more been done through an executive order from the head of the USDA to provide this service. So it's really for an unknown amount of time. It could end October first, or it could go until December thirty-first, or it could get extended to June. We really do not have any idea about what the timeframe will be on this. But for the start of the school year, all meals will be free for all of our students. We are encouraging families to still complete their free and reduced lunch applications because if we do have to go back to a paid model, which again, could be Thursday lunches are free, Fridays they're paid, it could be that quick that those applications are instead. If you're going to qualify for free or reduced lunch, that you already have that application in, and you're good to go. We're also encouraging families to not withdraw their money. So a lot of families have prepaid lunches with us already on hand from the end of last year and from different time periods. So we encourage them to leave that money on account for your students to buy snacks or when that transition does happen to when it goes back to paid meals. Our personal feelings is just that this most likely will not last through the entire school year, but we will be able to meet, you know, it's not a financial need to hold on to those prepaid meals. So if any family does want to get their money back, we can do that. It just means that you could be, you know, redepositing money in a couple of weeks onto your account.
Okay, so as we shift over from the physical safety, we're going to be moving into the emotionally safe learning environment and the equitable learning environment. So three goals in that area, but we really work on developing a safe, supportive, hopeful, sustaining equitable learning environment. That we really want to support equitable learning opportunities for all students by providing small group differentiated instruction. And we really want to capitalize on the technology that we are using in the...
Thank you. We were just going to check to make sure your mic is on. Yes.
All right. Okay, here we go. Okay, so starting over again. So we're transitioning from key physical safe learning environment to now the emotionally safe and equitable learning environments that we're working to cultivate. And in the emotionally safe and the equitable learning environments, we're really looking at three goals. The first one is to develop those safe and supportive learning communities that we are looking to provide equitable learning experiences for our students through small group differentiated instruction. And then we're really looking to capitalize on the technology that we're using in both our hybrid and remote learning environments and really build those 21st-century learning skills in our students. So we're really looking for kids to become strong problem solvers, work collaboratively, and really build on their communication skills. Again, a key, as I've said each time we've met, to operating in both the hybrid and the remote learning environment is that we're using Google Classroom as our communicator to families and to students about what is happening in our classes and to keep all our learning materials organized. So that is going to be as parents begin the school year with their students, they're going to recognize that right away. To talk about the emotionally safe learning environments, really, from the get-go Wednesday, we're going to be starting to build relationships. We're building relationships with students and teachers at the beginning of the year, and then we're also working to build relationships among students so that there is, we're building a community of students. We're really going to work to support the social-emotional needs of our students. And many teachers, a lot of our opening day, our teacher professional development work has been around how do you support that learning community and how do you build those SCL competencies? We've really looked, we've had a committee that met over the summer and used the Castle Roadmap, and the title of it is "Renight, Renew, and Thrive." And the beginning days of school, we're really working with teachers to have students reunite together because they've been away for so long, and then renew and build on those relationships. So that is a big part of our school year. Part of that, as I talked about, is social-emotional learning, is that, you know, we worked last school year to really build on the five SCL competencies. And this year, we're really working on being explicit with the equitable, how equity plays out in these social-emotional learning competencies. And it's really to build respectful relationships with one another and really start to understand each other's perspective, and those things are highlighted in each of these competencies. So again, that is work that we will continue to do throughout the school year with our students. One thing that we've been weaving into our professional learning, starting last June, is really thinking about instructional equity. The power is with us as teachers and educators to really ensure that all kids learn to their highest levels. And we're really relying on this National Equity Project definition around instructional equity, that we really want to reduce the predictability of who succeeds and who fails. We want to interrupt it, we want to work to interrupt the reproductive practices that negatively impact students and cultivate the gifts and talents of every student. So that's a great definition for us to start to work to live up to. So as we started to prepare for school, we put the structure of our workdays with teachers into three segments. The first segment in the morning was professional development time or professional learning time. And that is, we spent about two hours each day working with teachers and providing them some type of professional development around the curriculum, around the social-emotional learning, around technology, working in the longer block at the middle and high school level, or determining the curriculum scope and sequence. It is also a time that we worked with adults around the social-emotional learning for themselves, really working on that reuniting and renewing for themselves as adults. And again, I think I have a nice team of teachers that work to facilitate those activities in each of the school buildings. So that team really came through and operationalized that for us. Then we took a little break, and then the teachers worked in what we call common planning time groups, or their PLCs. And they worked together to start to implement the professional learning that they had in the morning and to really start to develop those classes and the curriculum that they would deliver to students. So that is in smaller groups. It usually was about three or four teachers and working together, either virtually or socially distanced in a room, most of the time virtually because there's always someone on their team that is working remotely. And then after lunch and some self-care time, then we also work, and the third segment of the day is about two hours, is really their own time where they're in their classroom setting up and getting ready for kids, and also working on individual skill building, some of the technology work that they had to do on their own to kind of bring up their competencies to be able to do the work. And then there was a lot of logistical and material work to get ready to hand out to our students, as well as some of the Chromebooks, especially at the elementary level. Again, this is just a quick SCL activities. The team that I had worked together and pulled these activities, and each picked from a menu to what they were going to do with their teachers at the schools. And this is a sample of the Riverside School meeting out socially-distanced for the teachers that were in school. And then also, they had teachers, they did a combination of virtual activities, and then for those that were in the building, they did some outside socially-distanced. And I think Highland School was another one that had the opportunity to get outside as well. Okay, so part of our preparation for school is really working on the scheduling. So in the last time that we met, we really worked to finalize the hybrid and remote student numbers and assign them to cohorts. So we've sent out that information to families now, and they're getting notified of the student schedules and what cohorts they're in. We've been working with each of the schools around their high-need students that would be coming more than the two days during the hybrid model, that would be coming four days. So we've worked on that and designing what their days would look like. We worked to organize materials for distribution, as I just said. And then we also worked on putting all the student schedules in Power School, which that, as you get down to individual students and their schedules, there's a lot of logistics that go with that. So that is where we are with the scheduling. We also want to just reinforce that the first day of school is on Wednesday. And we're talking about the schedule. It will be a remote day because Wednesdays are remote. So all students will be sent information on how to log into the meeting. That's happening now at the elementary level. Parents are also getting information on how to do that. Then Thursday and Friday start Cohort B in school. So Cohort B students will be coming to school and going into classrooms. Cohort A students will be working remotely. They will get information about that on Wednesday on how they log in and get ready. We'll be introducing, as I said to you, Google Classroom, which will have all the links for them so that they could be successful in logging in on Thursday and Friday. So that's the beginning of the school day. Cohort A comes back on Monday, and they come to school when the Cohort B then works remotely. So the teachers all have all these logistics down, have great presentations for the students, and are ready to work with them. And then finally, the principals have been busy last week. They all put together family forums at the elementary level. They were in combination with a PACT meeting. So you can see here Tracy Mara was one of the elementary principals. Their format kind of took a question-answer and a more informal approach. And then at the middle and high school level, it was not a PACT meeting. It was a presentation done by Adam Federico, the principal of the Holton Richmond, and then Jason Colandino is the principal of the Danvers High. Most of these presentations have been posted on the school's websites. So they were recorded, except one school, Great Oak, was not able to record theirs. So that's getting ready for those, getting back to school.
Thank you, Keith and Mary, for the logistics and the overview of our scheduling for preparing for the beginning of the school. Also thinking, as we move into the day before school tomorrow, if there are additional questions from our families and working with their principals and their teachers, please reach out, please send an email, a phone call if you do have a question tomorrow, making sure that you have everything that you need to begin the year. We were able to see a number of families today through the Chromebook distribution at the elementary school and started at the high school also. So with that, we close out the reopening of schools presentation for this evening with next steps, really looking at the assets in our community for voice and ownership, again, that everyone has responsibility for the work going forward. So really looking at this year, how do we do this together? It begins with looking at ourselves as we are working with our faculty or teachers, working with our students and our families. It will be defining equity together. Mary began with a definition at a national organization level, and we really need to dig in. dig into that and define equity for the Danvers Public Schools. This is a long-term commitment, as we do with our strategic planning, but it really is a long-term commitment that we will continue to make progress every year. So beginning to always move forward, looking to see where we've been, what do we need to improve on, and put that into action so that way we have a long-term commitment. And then that our actions make a difference, that we can say these words, we can put a presentation together for the school committee, we can write our school improvement plans, but it will really be the actions that people see when they come back. So that is what will make a difference for the Danvers Public Schools. So I finished with, for this presentation for our district with our collective why. Again, why are we doing the work that we do? And it goes back to the beginning of our theory of action when we shared with you this evening, that we promote a safe and healthy learning environment, we have engaging learning activities for our students, and we believe that all students can and will learn at their highest potential. Then we do achieve our vision for our students, that students will become productive, responsible, caring citizens of the global community and achieve their definition of success. So that is what we strive for in all of our actions on a daily basis. Thank you.
Great. Thank you all. Questions? Eric, would you like to start?
Sure. So it's clear to me, a lot of thought has gone into planning for the opening, both from a sort of the technical standpoint and the strategic standpoint. I do have a couple of questions, in particular, and this gets really specific. When we're talking about, say, for example, special education students, and we talk about the equity piece, and students who need to receive occupational therapy but where parents have opted to keep students remote, how is that going to work?
Thank you. I'll begin and then I'll ask Mary if she'd like to add with the pieces. So again, as we have done in the past, we'll be looking at their remote. So if a parent has chosen for fully remote, then the service provider will be providing that. Again, it will look different, but we will be able to provide those services. And Mary has more details around looking at high need students also that she could add to that if you would like.
Okay. I think that's just a very, very important part of delivering equity for all students. So, you know, and if we hear feedback on that, we'll certainly let you guys know how that's going.
Thank you. And we just added for today also, and Dr. Tatum sent out the email to our families that do have a child with an IEP, that with working with CPAC, that we will have a CPAC meeting on Monday evening to be able to answer questions she's asking, similar to our family forums, that if people do have questions, to send them to her and then we will integrate them into the presentation. But we did feel like was an opportunity to have everyone start the first cycle through the hybrid model to come in and then on Monday evening at 6:00 PM have our Google meet, sorry, a Zoom meeting, a Zoom meeting with our CPAC and for any parents that have any questions about special education.
Okay. Let's see what else do I have? Yeah, I mean, you know, I was one of the people who had concerns about moving ahead in the hybrid. And I think that, you know, we've done the best we can to provide the safe environment, to provide, you know, the best chance of success. And some of it's going to depend simply on what happens going forward and what happens in the towns around us. But I think that, to me, the key is continued communication between administration and staff and parents and students in that cycle so that everybody has transparency, knows what's going on, a way to get questions answered. And we're going to have to be creative and thoughtful in terms of what we do. But based on what I've seen here, I think you're set up for success as much as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joe.
Jeff?
Yeah, I agree. Thank you for the work on this. This is a good plan. Two quick questions. One is on the DESI DPH mobile rapid testing. Is, maybe I missed that. So this is rapid testing as in they could rapidly get people here to test us? Or rapid as in your turnaround time is in two hours?
Both. So I would say that the rapid testing is really referring to the amount of time it takes for the test results to come back, but they've also indicated that it will be a quick response to the district. It's essentially a mobile truck that shows up to start testing your staff and families should there be an outbreak.
Right. That's excellent. Terrific. That's good news. And then the other, it was more of a comment actually, was the free lunch is a great program, certainly for the cost element, but just if you think about, I don't know if this is true, the processing time it takes now for, you know, even if you've had a sort of a cashless sort of thing, you don't have to ask, I don't, you're not checking off students' names to see anything, right? I'm assuming it's pretty fast, it's contactless, it's get your food, go. That saves time, that reduces contact, you don't have to be speaking as much. I'm assuming those are additional benefits that are going to come from this, this program as well, right?
We are waiting for the final details from the state, which should be out this Thursday, around the amount of, I'm going to call it tracing, which is the wrong word for school lunch, but the amount of, like whether you have to hit your pencil on the pen pad to track who's bought lunch and not.
Yeah.
Or whether it's completely waived, there's been some talk of, again, around accountability, just being able to track who's utilizing it for efficacy of the program.
Okay. Good.
But yes, it will speed up the lines, it will do all those other pieces.
Good. Those are the questions I had. Thanks.
Mary Beth?
Sure. Thank you very much for the hard work that's gone into it on all sides. Quick question though, back to the lunch, Keith. So if my son purchased lunch every, you know, last year, there's money in his account, when he goes to buy lunch this year, do I have to fill out a way, like a form prior to, like he wasn't on free and reduced lunch last year?
No, you don't need to fill out any form. If you were on free and reduced lunch last year, we encourage you to fill out the forms again this year, or if you feel like you would qualify in a traditional pay program because you have lost your job due to the pandemic, we encourage you to fill out the forms now so that you are ready to go should the program end.
So he goes to school next week, if he goes and gets lunch, just the regular part of the lunch, that's automatically free to him?
Correct.
And then any à la carte, like chips or an ice cream or beverage, that is extra? So that's why I have additional money in your account?
Right.
Okay. All right.
And that is their favorite thing to buy.
Right. Exactly.
The lunches are not always there.
On remote days, when students are home on their remote time, if they are sick that day, they can't log on, they can't be in front of their computer, they have to call in like they normally would, even if you're doing remote learning, they would call the number, leave the name and grade level, or do they email the teacher if they're not going to be in? How's that going to work? Do we know?
They would call the office to do attendance like they normally would.
Okay.
And then those same reports will be available to staff on a daily basis so they know who's in attendance or not.
Right.
I will though, that did remind me, if I can just jump back to lunch for one second?
Sure.
There will be lunch pickup for remote students at Danvers High School from 10:00 to 11:15 on a daily basis, including the days that you're in a hybrid mode. And then we are in the process of establishing a delivery program, again, for families with no transportation that should start up within the next couple of weeks.
And so for the remote, will they have to put in their order, like the week of, the day before, like they did in the summer?
The day before. And Tom Powers will be sending out more information with that, but we're actually looking to institute an online ordering system so that all students, because especially at the elementary level, some will be eating in the gym and some in the caf. So that way, we already know that you ordered hamburger, apple, and rice, and we have that ready to go for you when you come in. Oh, you ordered a hamburger and we hand it to you all prepackaged to help with the pace of the line and to not have lines forming.
Okay, so Food Services is working on that. So even if your kid is going in person to school, you're going to be asked to place an order ahead of time so that they have a count of what they're going to need on hand for when your student gets to the count.
Right. And again, for these first week and a half, two weeks, the classroom teachers will be facilitating that piece, but we're moving in that direction as we get the technology up and running.
How will it work in middle and high school?
It should be the same way.
Okay.
And Tom, again, Tom Powers will, he sent out a message today just announcing the program, and then there'll be more details to follow in the next couple of weeks, and he could probably talk to you for an hour about all of it he did to me earlier this week.
No, thank you for that. And so back to the calling out, it would just be the regular calling out, you call like you normally would, either the office or, you know, the high school, you know, you just call and report your child absent for the day, even if they're learning remotely, if they're sick and can't log on.
Right.
Okay. So is there information on preschool? Has that been sent out to the preschool families, how it's going to go? And we focused a lot on the K to 12. Is there any additional info for preschool?
So preschool, in the traditional format, last year would have been, you would attend school for four half-days. For this year, you'll attend school for two fuller days, so you'll attend from 8:30 to 1:00? 1:30? I think 1:30. And you would stay at school for lunch, so you would either go Monday, Tuesday, or you would go Thursday, Friday. So the amount of educational time they're receiving is the same that they received last year, but that we're not mixing cohorts.
So preschool's in the same thing, Cohort A, Cohort B, Wednesday, is that a remote day for, no? So it's just the two and two?
A two-day program.
Because it's the equivalent of the same number of service hours of the four days they received last year, just in a consolidated calendar.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's it at the moment. Eric asked about the IEP, and I, that was just another question I just had. Families are going to be contacted shortly with that, like especially who your coordinator is or who to contact if you have questions. But if you have questions beforehand, to reach out to Dr. Tatum. And then there is the CPAC meeting Monday night at 6:00 virtually to have a presentation and answer more questions for that going forward?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's it at the moment. Thank you, Dave.
Great. Thank you. Arthur?
No questions. I think Eric said it best. I think you've put together, between the administration, the teachers, the staff, a ton of work has gone into this. I think we've put together a good, a good plan. And now I'm looking forward to see how it, how it works over the next couple of weeks. But it looks good and hopefully it's going to go very nicely. So thanks.
Thank you.
Great. I agree with my colleagues. I think the plan looks really good, knowing that, you know, there are going to be wrinkles that, you know, are going to have to be ironed out. I just have two quick questions and a comment. The first one is just about the free lunch, which seems to be a theme here. Keith, you had mentioned, you know, it might be a case where it's, you know, we have free lunch on Thursday, we don't have it on Friday. I know you're exaggerating, but could we make a commitment where we'll give people like one week's notice if free lunch is going to change so that way they can put money in their accounts and all that?
We will do our best. We would hope that the state would show us that same courtesy.
Courtesy.
And we actually did share information about the program today because we thought it was important to get out prior to the first day of school, even though the state's not sharing it till Thursday.
Okay.
So we will pass on the information as soon as we get it.
Yeah. Because obviously, if it's a Thursday to Friday situation, you're going to have people that haven't had a chance to, you know, add money to their accounts.
Right.
So just be cognizant of that. And then Wednesday, as Mary mentioned, you know, is our first day, and we're remote that day for all students. What is the protocol should someone have a technology issue? Is there a certain number to call? Do they call their principal or what's the plan?
I would say we are. So I would say to contact their principal would be the best bet for this week. And again, Jeff and his team, we have an internal help desk system that we use for staff, and we're in the process of establishing a help desk system for students to use as well and families. From anything from I need help with Google Classroom to my Chromebook won't turn on, the keyboard's not working, anything along that spectrum.
Right. Because I could imagine the first day of school, you're trying to log in, the login's not working, the Chromebook's not working, there's some issue, that's going to obviously cause some concern for students and parents. So to reiterate, they should call their building principal and work through a solution that way. Okay. And then just my comment was, I heard great feedback about the family forums, especially at a couple of the elementary schools, that they were really helpful, they were really appreciative of the administration, particularly the teachers, for everything that they're doing. So thank you for having those and making them valuable to the parents and families.
Thank you. And we had great attendance with all of them.
Yeah, that's, that's great. And I think maybe Dr. Dana, I said to you, it gives parents an opportunity to participate that might not otherwise be able to because they have a childcare issue or they've got something going on so they can't go to that Tuesday night at 7:00. But this way, they could, you know, call in or zoom in or do whatever they need and get the information and feel like they're part of the community.
Definitely.
Some of the benefits of this crazy world we're living in. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just had a question and a comment. So there was a little confusion, I think, on Chromebook pickup for some folks. So if you had originally filled out your survey of which way you were going, remote or hybrid, it asked about if you were going to need a Chromebook, and you said yes or no. So the folks that said yes, were they supposed to be contacted individually or was that like a school email that went out that said when you would come and pick it up?
That was the school email that went out, and everybody on the survey that responded yes received a Chromebook. They were given the priority access before the request that came in later.
Okay, and that was my other question. There are some folks that maybe missed that part in the survey and now are realizing either a computer's not working that they thought would. So is there still computer Chromebooks available? Is there still time to pick up?
So I would say continue to contact your building principal. We, I mean, we're getting lower, but we do have some left still. And again, every student grades one through eight received a Chromebook. Every student in kindergarten that requested a Chromebook received one. And then every high schooler to date that we've heard from have one, even though we have one, I think one pickup date left as part of the advertised cycle that we have. And the supply is getting lower, but I would say the demand has gotten lower each day, roughly.
And for folks not realizing, you don't have to have a Chromebook to log on to Google Classroom. You can log on it from a regular computer or a laptop, doesn't matter if it's Apple or a PC, they can access the Google Classroom from any type. You know, you don't have to have a Chromebook.
And again, we're in the same position that there's a lot of schools across the state and the country are in, is this was a global supply chain issue based to, you know, Chromebooks being embargoed. And we did place the order back in early June and we were assured that they would be here originally during August, which they would have been if that order wasn't embargoed and then essentially the manufacturing process restarted. We kept our same place in line to get our devices, they just had to be remanufactured.
Okay. Thank you. And then my just comment, just sitting here thinking how I've been getting my child ready for school, and I would just, you know, encourage families to remind their kids, you know, we've got to be a little bit flexible, everything's going to, you know, we're going to work through it. But to be, you know, safe, wear the mask, wash your hands, social distance, you're going to be happy to see your friends, but just remember, keep doing what we've been doing and don't send your kids to school if they're sick. And that's, as a community, let's try to make this work, and it's only going to work if we do it together. So I just wanted to make that comment and, you know, have those conversations before we, you know, get back into a hybrid mode. But that's it. Thank you.
I just want to quickly add to that, just for clarity purposes, to make sure I understand the Chromebook issue. If someone has chosen to not request a Chromebook because they have a device at home that they're planning to use, they take that device with them to school. So it's a bring your own device to school and use it there as well as using it at home, which is new from what we've ever done before.
Correct, at the high school level.
At the high school level.
At grades one through eight.
They all have a Chromebook.
They all have a Chromebook. And we're encouraging them to use the school-based device so that they're, have a familiarity of use both in the classroom and at home. We had a few requests from parents that said, can my third grader leave my Chromebook in school? We have a device at home. And what we've tried to say to parents is, no, please have them bring that device home with them because that's what they're going to be used using in the classroom, that's what they're going to be familiar with.
Right.
So to help with their, you know, level of expertise.
I just didn't want, let's say, a sophomore in high school who starts remotely on Wednesday and say, oh, I have my own computer at home, to show up on Thursday without bringing their computer with them, thinking they were going to get a Chromebook when they came to school on Thursday or next Monday, whatever their day is.
And we are working on the network elements of opening up the high school guest wireless network where there's terms and conditions to agree. wireless network where there's terms and conditions to agree to, for that they can get those devices onto the network, which they have not been able to do in the past, which was a separate project that was actually happening simultaneously that is now working out nicely that we laid the groundwork for that.
So based on that, there will be glitches. So to Mary Beth's point, please have some patience and some flexibility because everything is not going to work perfectly the way we want it to, um, when school opens on Wednesday. Anything else? All right, we'll move to new business.
Thank you. So we have our, um, teacher contract. We'll put the school committee to vote on the temporary contract agreement for the 2021 school year with our Danvers Teachers Association.
I would move that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion in the second, uh, discussion. Arthur?
Uh, no, I don't, I don't really have any, any, any questions or anything. I, I would just say this, that I would like to, um, we, we did obviously have a chance to review the contract, uh, beforehand, um, and I would just like to thank, um, the DTA and, and the administration for working on it, coming up with something that works for everybody. Um, going to get, get, to get the kids back in school and, and, and doing the best we can for, uh, for, for our students. So, um, I'm good with it and hopefully, uh, this will let us go forward. Thanks.
Great. Mary Beth?
Uh, second, Arthur. Thank you to the DTA, to the administration, um, and, you know, thank you for all the time put into it and, um, looking forward to the start of the school year. Thank you.
Jeff?
Uh, yeah, I would, I would echo that. Um, thank you to everyone who participated. I know it was, uh, some back and forth, but, um, it is, uh, it is a good contract, um, and I'd certainly approve it. So thank you.
Eric?
Yes. Um, first of all, thank you to the, uh, teachers union for, and to the administration for working on the details here. What this contract essentially is, you know, usually when we talk about a teacher's contract, we're talking about time on learning, uh, scheduling and financial pieces. And, uh, this was really a way to work with the teachers and with the administration to make sure that as much as possible, the teachers' concerns were addressed in terms of coming back to a safe environment and a way to effectuate the hybrid learning, um, as a way to start out. And, uh, there are probably things that, um, we'll still have to work on, we'll see how things work out and be flexible if necessary, but I hope we've put together a good framework that at least makes it reasonably comfortable that when you come back, there's a plan to keep the school safe for the students, teachers, staff. And so I appreciate Lisa and your team working on this and Jody, that the union, we appreciate their willingness to sit down and work something out because, uh, it's just extremely important. So thank everybody concerned.
And I would say ditto. Thank you to the, the DTA, uh, the administration, everyone involved in working it out. Um, as, uh, Arthur mentioned, we got a presentation, uh, about it, uh, and got really detailed. Uh, the details were amazing, uh, and Keith kept saying, and, and I agree, that it was impressive how, um, the teachers, uh, were so focused on the safety aspect of it. They knew we had the kind of the curriculum and the educational stuff down, but it was the safety aspect. And I understand, you know, people are scared, you know, this is a highly unusual time that we're living in, but I think, um, you guys worked together really well to come up with something that, you know, on paper, again, looks like it's a really good plan and is going to work and, uh, hopefully everyone will, you know, work together to, to make it be successful. So thank you to everyone that was involved and, um, best of luck as you start the new school year.
Thank you. Thank you. It really was a collaborative process, um, and we have that foundation and as part of it, we have our joint health and safety committee that will continue. So as you talked about that, again, with each plan that we have, it needs that ongoing communication, um, and work, um, to make sure we really understand all the pieces. So we already have that set up to move forward.
So I believe we need a vote. Is that correct?
Well, do you want to let the teachers speak to us at all?
Hi.
If they want to, they don't have to.
Completely optional. If you would like to speak, we would love to hear from you. If not, we don't want to put you on the spot. Thank you for the reminder.
Jody loves a microphone.
Oh, sure. It's good practice for getting back into the school year.
There you go.
Um, no, I just want to thank you all for the time that we put into it. It definitely was, as I joke, how I spent my summer vacation is that document. Um, and thank you to you all for hearing our concerns and working with us and we look forward to the conversations going forward to make sure that we continue to have the safest environment. We know it's not going to be perfectly safe, but the safest environment that we can have. So thank you.
That's our goal too.
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jody. Okay. So now we do need a vote, I believe. We have a motion in the second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
No one is opposed, so the vote passes.
Okay, thank you.
And just one point of clarification from earlier, not the vote right now, is the preschool's eight thirty to one. Violetta texted multiple of us to make sure that we got the message out so that it was on the record the right way. So eight thirty to one.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Team effort. Thank you very much. Great.
So move on to co-curricular, uh, and athletics?
Thank you. So we would like to review the DESI and the MIAA guidelines, um, and then have school committee vote on a participation timeline. And this evening we have, um, Keith Severner, Andy St. Pierre and Jason Colavino that have a presentation for you.
Great.
So if Andy and Jason come up, I think Jason's going to kick us off and then Andy, um, there has been obviously some press coverage around what the NEC voted and then other local communities that have made other decisions. So we felt it was important to bring it to you and we felt it was important to broaden it beyond just athletics to co-curriculars as a whole. So what are those activities that help support the students' social emotional learning and really round out their high school experience? And now that we're on the eve of getting back into school, it's time to make sure that we take a look at these and, and get them up and going.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Um, so we wanted to start, wanted to make sure to talk about all of our co-curricular and athletics together because in addition to our teaching and learning that happens in the classroom, we have so many opportunities that we feel like it's a real strength at Danvers High School, um, and it's a real reason why so many of our students come to school and they're engaged and motivated. Um, and the list could go on, so I won't start it, but we just have so many amazing programs. Um, my wife and I were talking the other night, um, this week both of our kids have birthdays and, uh, my daughter wanted to perform a piece from Hamilton and my son wanted to play football. So those are two examples and that goes up to like high school, right? Like it's important. What we're doing here is really important and we also want to really make sure while we acknowledge that, we want to really focus on the safety and health, um, of everybody and make sure that we reopen schools and we do it the right way, like we have in planning. We have a really solid plan in place where we can mitigate risk. We want to really prioritize that and then also continue, as we'll talk about tonight, how do we get into providing access for co-curriculars and athletics in a way that's responsible, makes sense, um, is accessible and equitable? So the three driving, um, driving principles we talked about, health and safety, to make sure that we're following all the DESI guidelines, all the CDC recommendations around health and safety, um, hand washing, social distancing, staying home when you're sick, um, and other details around what athletics and co-curriculars could look like. Uh, we want to provide access for students and just like with everything from technology to being in the classroom, we want to make sure we're doing it in an equitable way. So not the same for every student, but in a way where every kid can get what they need. So for co-curriculars, so there's a detailed document, um, but big picture, um, guidance from the state is to have meetings and competitions that will be virtual whenever feasible and possible and of course supervised by an advisor in those virtual settings. Um, if in-person meetings or competitions do happen, that will follow the DESI core health and safety guidelines, um, that we just mentioned. We also want to make sure, a couple of examples, so a lot of, um, DECA work could happen virtually with meetings and getting feedback and even presentations can be recorded, um, banding chorus, while there may be some in-person meetings, those would be outside and also following all of DESI's guidelines around that, at least 10 feet apart, um, or more very small groups. And the majority of that would be flipped so that students are practicing their instruments or singing at home. They can also record. Our teachers have done a great job putting a plan together and when they're in person, because so many of our co-curriculars are connected to classes at Danvers High School, like DECA and banding chorus, that it would be flipped so that those in-person meetings would be more around, um, analyzing their music that they practiced at home, right? And to learn more about music theory so that we're really flipping the classroom so that students still have the core experience of those activities and clubs, um, although it might look a little different this year. And while it's not directly connected, the guidance also included, um, advice around volunteering and community service. So we wanted to make sure that we acknowledged and named that as well. We do want to make sure that, um, students still participate in community service if they want to and that they feel safe doing it. Those activities should be virtual or outdoors and allow for social distancing. And of course, like with the class of 2020, um, our school is going to have flexibility on this community service graduation requirements for all students this year. Um, we haven't, you know, we're going to see how the year unfolds, but we just know that everybody in the community that we will be flexible about it. It is not something to stress about. We want to balance that need. It is a graduation requirement for a good reason. It's important, but also know that this year we're going to be really flexible and not hold students, you know, to that stringent number of hours, ask us questions early on and as the year unfolds, we'll continue to update families on where we are with that. And then Andy's going to, Mr. St. Pierre is going to talk about athletics.
Thank you, everyone, for having me again here tonight. Uh, a lot has changed in the three or so weeks that I was here last with you. Um, at that time, when the vote happened, there were five schools in the NEC that were in red communities. Uh, I think a day or two later, two came out of that. So right now we have three, um, communities that are in the red. In the last week or so, week and a half, uh, five additional, uh, districts in our league have voted to play this fall. So that's sort of a little context of where we are today. Um, the slide here is just a quick, uh, background update for you. I think we talked about last time. EEA basically broke down the sports into three categories based on their risk levels. Lower risk is cross-country and golf. These are sports that can play and compete right away with no physical contact. The moderate risk, the middle level, is soccer, volleyball and field hockey. These are the sports that, uh, they deem were safe to play with certain sports, specific modifications that we talked about last time. And since that meeting, those modifications have come out for each sport as well in the fall. And then the higher risk sports are football, cheering and unified basketball, which are, are automatically moved to the fall two season, that's February through April. So there was no modifications that the MIAA sport committees could come up with in which those sports could operate safely in this current time. So looking, we, we had a lot of discussion and back and forth on the benefits, uh, of the fall one season versus fall two. And there's a lot of benefits, as you can see. First and foremost is the student engagement, the SEL connection, which several people have talked about tonight, which is, is so important for young people these days, you know, to get them connected to the school outside the classroom and, you know, and keep that connection and the teamwork and, and being part of a team and all those values that come with sports and can be valued, can be learned through the social emotional connection in sports. The student athletes in the fall one, if we can play, will also regain a sense of normalcy. It's been a really crazy year, as everyone knows. A lot of these students missed out on their spring season already completely. Uh, so that chance to just get back to the routine. Thankfully, we're getting them back in school. You know, if we can add this next layer of getting them back to their clubs and activity, I think it really just helps that overall experience. It helps with the discipline, making sure they have a schedule, you know, daily that they adhere to to get that work done, make sure they're doing the right things and staying on task. The student athletes also will be competing within the approved framework, the MIAA frameworks and sport modifications. A lot of time and effort went into those modifications. The sport committees at the MIAA met many times, uh, but it wasn't just them. There were medical professionals, health professionals, they have the sports medicine committee, they were all part of this discussion and they took every sport individually and mapped out what it would take for those sports to operate appropriately. And that's sort of the framework that they've left us with currently. The current data supports a safe return to play. The future's very uncertain, as you know, this, this pandemic, it, it could go any way. You know, we're looking at what the data we have now, is it safe to play? Is it not safe to play? We think, uh, we can do it based on everything that we've seen and with the modifications. Um, we'll talk a little bit about the youth clubs. Uh, the weather and the field conditions is a huge one, um, for the fall season in terms of making it feasible to play. We, we all know that, that fall two, February, March, it's some of the worst weather we have. Um, if the turf was covered in, in snow or ice, you know, you, you don't have much option at that point. Um, and all the grass fields, you know, they, they take a long time to dry out after the winters. That was a big part and it's, it's a big part of trying to get this in while we can if it's safe to do so. As I mentioned earlier, several NEC schools, about half, I think right now are playing, voted to play in fall one. Uh, so the league is, is divided a little bit now, so there'll, there'll definitely be teams to play. It won't be a full NEC schedule by any means, uh, but it'll be about half. Youth clubs, uh, over the summer, youth and club sports, they've, they've essentially modeled the competition and how to do this over the summer, throughout the summertime. Um, kids get it. They wear their masks. Parents get it. They're spaced out on the sidelines. I think everyone really understands and, and, and understands that if they want to play, they have to make, uh, modifications. They have to change the way they're going to do business. And I think there, there weren't any noticeable spikes from the youth sports scene, uh, over the summer. And I think that really helps to, you know, kids younger than our kids especially have really shown that it can happen. And a lot of our kids are playing in the clubs in the youth scene as well. Um, so they get it. It's not going to be new information for them. Some of the modifications may be new for them, but they'll, they'll adjust to it. They'll understand that. Now the chance for students just to resume physical and competitive, physical activity after the spring layoff is big. Physical activity component, getting outside, being able to run around with your friends, you know, and being competitive in a competitive nature and coming together as a team and working together towards a greater goal. This is a unique situation that actually provides access to four seasons of athletic participation instead of the typical three. Um, it's not for everybody, but the, the sports that are now in the fall two season have the opportunity, if they so, so choose, to play in the fall one season. You can participate in all of them per the MIAA right now. Uh, so that's a unique opportunity that we haven't had before. And then last but not least, man, this doesn't affect every student athlete that we have, but it affects a good chunk of them and it's, it's a real part of this is the season, especially as a senior, provides them one last chance to provide game film, what they can do, which is going to determine a lot of if and when certain student athletes will go on to play in college, where they might go, whether they decide to play a sport or not. That's a big deal for these kids. I know it's important to them. The drawbacks, the big drawback is, is the equity concern. We talked a lot about equity tonight and as I mentioned, there's still three communities that are still in the red, you know, so unfortunately they can't play right now. And we don't know the future, what holds for them. So it would be a little bit of a league divided in that. We, we couldn't include everyone based on the metrics right now if we were to play in the fall one season. Limited number of schools to schedule is another drawback, as we talked about, with about half the league voting to play now and half, um, three of them can't and then three others are up in the air right now. They're, they're deciding what to do. There's no NEC championships, um, in, in the fall one season. Theoretically, there will be in the fall two season. However, it's important to note that there will be no MIA postseason in either, uh, for the sports that are playing now. Um, so that's a distinction. I wasn't aware of that before, but that's, um, so that's a big part. A lot of kids play for the tournament and the chance to win a state title, so that's a big part of this. So whether we play now or later, they won't have that opportunity regardless. And then the last thing is, what if, what if something happens? What if there is a spike in Danvers and we end up forfeiting the season or we're losing half the season? Do we forfeit that opportunity to finish it out in the Fall Two? And I spoke to MIAA the other day, and they're figuring the metrics out for that right now. The district athletic committee is the one who comes up with those stipulations. And unofficially, it'll go probably to a vote to the district athletic committee based on the situation. I think it's going to be a case-by-case scenario. You know, if you get three of your games in and then the season's canceled for health or pandemic reasons, I think they're open to finishing that later. If you play seven, eight games during the season, I don't think we'll have that option. But that's not set in stone. That's TBD. They're working on that currently. Now Keith, we'll talk to you a little bit about the modifications, changes throughout the stadium. That's going to affect mostly the fans, but also the student athletes as well. And then we'll finish with our recommendation. Thank you.
So again, obviously, an important part of high school athletics is especially for the parents to get to participate and see their students playing. Per the EEA guidance, there should be no more than 50 individuals as guests at any athletic event. There's a little bit of different regulations for inside venues, but with the fall, we're talking primarily outside and it is a maximum of 50. So if we were to have spectators at games, we would be looking at a two-family, two-person-per-family maximum and only for the home team. So when games are in Danvers, our parents would be able to attend their children's games. And different North Shore communities have taken different stances on this. The Cape Ann League actually recently just came out and said, there's no spectators at any games, including parents. But we felt it was important to try to have the parents or family members be able to be part of that experience with their students, especially for our seniors. So we'd be looking at limiting it to two family members to keep underneath that maximum and only again for our students and who would be the home team at home games. Masks would be required at all times for spectators. We're actually looking at closing the bleachers and asking families to bring their own chairs, similar to inside school settings. If you are to have them into the public spaces, into the bleachers, those bleachers need to be cleaned after each event. So if you had a varsity soccer game followed by a JV soccer game, the direction is that the bleachers would have to be fully cleaned in between. And the guidance also indicates that you'd be cleaning the bleachers for over 1,000 people for the 50 people that you had attend the game. So it just becomes not feasible scope-wise or feasible time-wise in order to manage a fall schedule like we do. Provide, all families would have to provide the contact tracing information upon entering, so we'd be tracking each guest. And we would look at what online systems we could use to help facilitate that. So is it a Google form that you have to fill out before the game that goes to the coach so that we know who is coming or what that looks like? Again, one-way entrances and exits, so you'd enter through the main ticket booth and exit around the backside by the scoreboard. Again, to keep the flow, even with the limited number of people, these are all still within the guidance of the rules to follow. No pre- or post-game gatherings onsite or in the parking lot. So there would be no congregating in the parking lot after the game, between families, between players at all. Again, part of the guidance is really looking at us having families sign off on that, that they're not going to participate in those activities. Safety signage, six-foot markings at entrances and egresses, and no concession or scoreboard access is what our proposal is. Again, if you open up those spaces, it gets into the physical cleaning of those spaces. So we think it's important, and this will lead into our recommendation, but that we do want to play a Fall One season is our recommendation to you with a start date of October 2nd. So that would give us, you know, approximately two, two and a half weeks from today to start to get the paperwork into order, get us to open schools and establish that first, and then start fall sports and extracurriculars. Based on the current data, we feel like this is a safe way, and we're asking that you also vote to support the recommendation around two family members for Danvers athletes at home games. Again, it's for cross-country golf, field hockey, boys and girls soccer, and volleyball, and then all of our other extracurricular activities. We would like to take a moment to thank the, especially the students who took the time to write to school committee and to administration about their desire to play sports and what it means to them, as well as the families and parents. But we always especially like when our students take that initiative to advocate for what's important to them.
Great, great. So you're looking for a vote on this, correct?
To support our recommendation, yes.
A vote to support the recommendation, so I'd be looking for a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, so a discussion about the recommendation. Jeff?
So this motion is for extracurriculars and sports and everything that was discussed.
Yes.
Approving that sort of, okay. So I'll go through each of the three of them. So the extracurricular activities that we talked about, are, are they having enough participation? Were the, was there enough participation when they started to go virtually last year? And if so, did any decline? Did any increase, or are they typically the same?
What I would say is that we didn't have a robust enough tracking process to answer that with the level of detail that I would like to for you, but that is part of the proposal for this upcoming school year is that with the virtual nature of them is that we will track the number of times that they meet, the number of participants, and who the kids are participating. So we have that information going forward.
Okay. And so the, are there fees for some of these activities, correct?
There are.
And some of these activities, will the fees be adjusted if there is no in-person or supplies needed? Or will most of them still be consistent for that fee?
Sorry. Most of the fees would continue to be consistent as a lot of those costs are fixed and most of the fees collected go to offset the salaries that are paid to the advisors and to the coaches for the sports and not so much to the supplies. The school committee budget covers that piece. So because those salaries would still be paid and the activity is happening, the fee would be collected.
Okay, great. The volunteering, I would just, and I've said this a little bit before about volunteering, but I just think in this world of remote teaching and learning and hybrid and technology, as we talked about with Chromebooks, I hope there's opportunity for students to volunteer, particularly the ones that are particularly technologically savvy, to help and offer their sort of services to other students or parents or others in the community, to be quite honest, who are, who are doing, looking to do this. So if there's an opportunity for volunteer hours, I would hope that in particular, some of our, you know, students would be able to help with that. That's just more of a statement, but.
And I would say Will Blath is our co, you're not a co, our volunteer coordinator, our community service coordinator, is always looking for those opportunities, so I encourage anybody in the community that has ideas to reach out to him. And even over the summer, he was emailing me about all the, all the volunteer opportunities that he had, even though we were in the middle of this pandemic.
Great. That's good, because I mean, this is changing everything, right? We're figuring out new ways to work, new ways to learn. I just, I have to believe there's a lot of good that's going to come out of this process that we can, we can learn from and take going forward, so that's good. And then the final on the sports, I absolutely agree with the recommendation. So for cross-country golf, field hockey, soccer, and volleyball, agree 100% on starting those to play the Fall One season. Question on transportation, are, I'm assuming that that is the same level of, you know, social distancing and adherence and cleaning that we have for everything else. There's no issues with procuring transportation for those sports if we decide to go forward, correct?
There's always issues, no. It's always a challenge to get buses, but yes, we're prepared. And I would say that Mr. St. Pierre and his team, Morgan in his office, and they've really done a great job at detailing out what all of those concerns are and beyond this presentation. I think I spent an hour and a half to go over the five-page document of questions and notes they had, including, yes, limited capacities on buses and how do we schedule differently so that we're playing Masco in all sports on any given day? So that way, the contact tracing and the inter-community dynamics are smaller in that given day. And so there's a lot of details also behind the scenes, including how we get kids to and from games with the limited capacity that we have on buses.
Good, great. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Great. Mary Beth?
So would this, for athletics, be for varsity and JV?
Varsity, JV, and freshman, and actually, middle school where we can. So the intent would still be to run middle school track. And we're currently have an opening for middle school field hockey coach, if anybody out there in the community is interested, but to run the two middle school fall sports.
Right, Beth, would the abbreviated schedule, it wouldn't be the typical 20-game schedule that you used to with the 18-game schedule. Right now, the goal would be to get about half that per sport. And it's obviously a condensed timeframe, especially with the start date of October 2nd. So there's, there's definitely going to be less in terms of busing and games and everything else.
So with an October 2nd start, does that mean tryouts start October 2nd?
So that's the first allowable practice date. So then there's 14 days from the October 2nd. You have to practice before you can have a competition for most sports, most of those sports. Golf is the exception. It's seven days. So we'll have to work within those frameworks. So it's going to be tight getting it in. It's essentially cutting the season in half from a typical season, and you're playing the same amount of games, so it's really equal in terms of the ratio.
Okay, so. And then I know you said the scoreboard closed, not accessible. Is there a way to remotely do the scoreboard if you're not up in the scoreboard? Is there like a?
We don't have a remote.
No, I just asked a question because I think I've seen it in some other places.
I smile because I asked Andy the same question.
Like from your phone?
Earlier this week.
There should be an app for that scoreboard, right?
We can turn the light on with the phone.
It's a great volunteer project for someone.
Technology, right? Community service.
There's options, like we have, we have a portable scoreboard that we use for wrestling and indoor events. Like we can wheel one out. It won't be visible by, you know, from far away, but we can certainly have that there and wipe it down at the end and store it with equipment.
Okay, I mean, it's not a big deal. I was just thinking, oh geez, I wonder if it could be done. Okay.
Right, and again, all these sports, the time can be kept on the field by the ref, so it won't affect the competitive play. It won't affect the viewing experience.
Yeah, certain other sports, you have to have a scoreboard by rule.
Oh, okay.
And in fact, volleyball is one where they, they keep the book at the table and then they keep it on the scoreboard. And they're saying one of their modifications is no scores at the table. We don't want that going on, so just use the scoreboard.
And inside, it's okay because we have, there are different cleaning protocols of different departments for indoor use.
Okay. Thank you. Those are the questions for athletics. And then co-curriculars, I know it was talked about high school, but what about like middle school? Is this the same thing and?
Yep, running a full slate. We have had some teachers who have already, as we started to work with them, kind of say they're not interested in running it this year with what the modifications would need to be. But I would say 95% of the advisors appear to be interested in running the co-curriculars for the year.
I think that was it. Thank you, Dave.
Great. Arthur?
No questions, but I just want to, first of all, say thanks to all the students that sent emails. You can see how much they, they want to be involved and play their sports and be involved in their activities. You know, from the day that I've been on this committee, we've talked a lot about the fact that what ties the kids to school often is the teams that they play on, the band that they play in, the chorus, the drama, the other clubs. And so I think it's really important that we do go forward with this to the extent that we can, and right now, we can. And so I would fully 100% support the recommendation. Thanks.
Eric?
Yeah, I am essentially behind this too. I think, as Arthur said, the connection that sometimes that's the only thing that brings a student, gets them really excited about going to school is whatever that activity is. I think the non-sports curriculums, it's pretty simple. As much as we can do remote, we do remote. And I think that'll work for everybody. And on the sports, I think that, that students and parents can make that decision together. And I do have one question, which is, I take it that the coaches are on board with this too and they, they want to go forward with the, with the plans as well. All right, I see people nodding. And yeah, we got a lot of emails from students who obviously were organized and took the time to write to us, and that's great. I do have a question, thinking, sort of thinking ahead. Do we know when we would expect to get some guidance on the winter sports? It's going to be honest before you know it. You know, it's September now. Before you know it, it'll be November. And we'll be thinking about basketball and hockey, and those are primarily indoor sports. So do we know what the MIAA scheduled for letting us know what they're thinking about those?
I don't know the exact timeline.
Sure.
I could be pretty confident in saying they're already thinking about it, but there's a lot that could potentially change between now and then with the data.
Sure.
But I think that those conversations are probably already happening. And how can we make this safe? Because there's a lot of those sports that are, they're sort of based on contact, like basketball, for example. Where you're playing defense, you're literally touching the person the whole time you're on defense, defending them. So there's going to be a lot of conversations about that. I think, I don't have a timeframe for you. I can certainly find one and get it to you based on what they're proposing. But I don't have that exactly, but it'll be ongoing, I think, as things evolve and change.
Now, when it comes to, say, soccer and field hockey, I'm guessing they're not thinking of any on-the-field rule changes. Those sports do have some contact. Are they looking at?
They are. They have changed, they have changed the games. Field hockey is now seven versus seven.
Okay.
Which is more than that prior.
So more space, all right.
Yep, so they're, the lesson, there's a max cap on how many people can be on the field now.
Okay.
Soccer, for example, they're eliminating the throw-ins, eliminating the goalie's drop kick can't go past the 50-yard line to prevent people going up for head balls.
Yep, yep.
That sort of stuff. So there's a lot of accommodations that are being made for those sports. To the point that it is going to change the game.
Yeah.
You know, and it is not going to be the same sport that you've played all your life at this point, but it's still a chance to play and compete. So if you're willing to accept those modifications, you can still go play within the rules.
That makes sense, yeah. Well, I definitely would support this, Mr. Jeff.
Great. Andy, just, don't leave just one question. I am in complete support of this. My only question is related to volleyball. All these other sports are outdoor sports, so I completely get it. Is there any concern about volleyball being an indoor sport and having the space, the circulation, the everything that we need to be safe?
Personally, I'm not concerned with it. I think we have a really good setup and plan with the metrics in place with the guests, the spectators. That's going to be a big one, is limiting that, controlling that and making sure we can clean after every event, which they do anyway.
Right.
So it's going to step it up a notch and make sure everything's sanitized as it should be. But again, we're talking about nine, 10 matches, oh, five, four or five at home, right? So it's not, it's not going to be outlandish. It'll be manageable, and I think if we have a plan in place, we can get it done. They have certain rules about sanitizing the balls, making sure you have enough balls. They're eliminating the ball shaggers who are typically sub-varsity players, so that they're eliminating all the, as many touch points as they can. There's a, they put a line in front of the net, I think it's three feet back, that you're supposed to stay outside that to prevent the net-to-net collision, so to speak, or blocking, things like that. So again, volleyball is going to change a little bit.
Yeah.
But from the safety standpoint, I think if you enforce what the protocols are, I think you're doing it as safely as you possibly can.
And there are some school districts locally that have voted to move volleyball to Fall Two. So it's kind of even more split than the overall sports decision some places have decided. But at this point, we're recommending that we think we can do it safely and that to give them the same experience as the other fall athletes per the MIAA direction.
Personally, I've never understood why volleyball is a fall sport and not a winter sport, but that is here and there. Yeah, as long as you think you can do it safely, and it sounds like by limiting the, the audience members, that's, you know, one way to keep the numbers down and then all the, you know, the modifications to the game. That was my only question.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So much for the spike.
All right, any other questions on this? All right, so we need to take a vote to approve the recommendation to move into Fall One season for the sports listed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No one opposed? The recommendation carries. Thank you. What do we get next here? We're going to take a five-minute break. We'll be back. For our, our DCAT folks, hang out for five minutes. Sure, no problem.
Yeah, I wish my ears were in the same shape with the rest of me. I feel pretty good otherwise.
Good.
Because I don't even know. Could be convincing at the high school.
Are we good? Okay, thank you. We are back. Uh, the next item on our agenda is something that we mentioned in our last meeting, which was to look uh, for an independent, an independent review of the Danvers High School culture and climate. Um, and our discussion at last meeting was to um, enter into an indep-, uh, sorry, a contract with an independent investigator. And our school attorney has done some work and provided a recommendation for us. Um, she is recommending that we go with attorney Allison Kuker uh, to propose uh, that we investigate the following three major items. Um, whether any Danvers Public School personnel engaged in or pursued sexual relations with current students or recent graduates, discriminated against or harassed any current students or recent graduates, or failed to adequately respond to allegations of bullying, harassment, discrimination, or inappropriate sexual relations with any current or recent graduates. And in this um, proposal that they provided, uh, they provided the the billing and all of the information um, for us. So I think we need to have a discussion on uh, whether this is something we want to move forward with or not. Mary Beth, would you like to start?
Um, for um, reading through the proposal, for the billing part of it, um, is there, do we already in the budget, Keith, have like a line item for legal services?
We do.
Would, do we have enough in that line item to potentially cover the the scope of this investigation? Or would we have to potentially borrow from somewhere else in the budget or?
So right, the way our budget is approved is it's a bottom-line appropriation. So if we were to exceed the legal line, we would typically have surpluses in supplies or let's say our strategic planning line and another line to help cover any surplus of expenses in one individual line.
Um, just reading through it, um, that was just something that jumped out at me. And I wanted to make sure it was something that I knew we had legal services line item, but just wanted to know if we needed additional funding for that. Uh, no, I do agree that um, this needs to happen. I'm happy that there is this proposal. Um, I don't have any questions at the moment on it. So thank you, Dave.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna bat out of order if I can here to ask the two attorneys on the committee here. Um, this investigator is an attorney, so we're paying attorney fees for her and her firm to do this work. Um, do you know if that's necessary, you know, or can we hire an investigator who's not an attorney? That might not be as expensive. I'm just curious. If either of you have any experience in that?
Well, me first or?
You go first, Eric.
All right. I mean, in my view, and I probably prejudice to some extent, but um, I think having an attorney versus, say, a private investigator might make sense because uh, an attorney is going to be, oh, looking at big picture, considering legal ramifications and what's going on. Will know um, any issues of privacy that might come up. So my inclination is to think that going with an attorney gives you some advantage um, in terms of those things that you don't expect to come up that might come up in the course of an investigation like this. I don't know if Arthur.
Um, I would say um, that if, I did a little bit of uh, research on on her after we got this.
Okay.
Uh, and her firm. And her firm, basically, they they're an employment law firm, but they're also, they also, um, one of the things that they do is investigations of this nature. And um, it it looks like from what I could read on her website, uh, and firm's website, and also some of the other information I was able to find, just, you know, doing an internet search, is that um, she's she's actually well, very experienced in in working in the school-type situations, both in colleges and in um, and in high school situations. Uh, so I think I, from what I could read, she looks like she's well-qualified to do this type of a job. So she's, she is an attorney, but they also do specialize in these types of investigations. As far as her fees, fees are certainly reasonable for for an attorney doing that type of work. So um, I I I wouldn't have any issue with that, again, based upon what I read as far as her background is concerned.
Great. Thank you. As I, like I said, batted out of order there. Do you want to continue, Arthur?
Uh, no, not too much. I mean, we we, I talked about this. We all talked about this at at the last meeting. My concern was just to see what the investigation was going. I I just wanted to see um, what the 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 questions or the plan for the investigation was. This seems to cover the things that we were concerned about. Um, so I'm I'm okay with with what was provided. I'm also um, good with the background of the investig-, the proposed investigator. So um, I'm in, I'm I'm fully uh, good with with what's in front of us.
Eric?
The only thing I would say is um, should we, should the scope of the investigation when it comes to um, Bullet Two, which talks about discrimination against any, whether DPS personnel discriminated against or harassed any current students or recent graduates, should we include staff in there? I mean, it's possible you could have someone on the staff who felt discriminated against um, for any sort of orientation they might have. And do we want, just to make sure we're closing the loop while we have someone working on this, do we want to include?
I agree with that.
Okay. Yeah, that would, that would be my only thought.
Okay. So that Bullet Two would be changed?
Yeah.
Uh, against any current students, or recent graduates, or staff?
Yes. Yeah. And then even the other thing overall, look, we know that we need to do this. When we talk about um, having a, you know, an equitable district, um, when we talk about social and emotional learning, um, nothing is more important than that. Our students and staff and everybody involved feel safe, feel that they are heard, feel that if there's a problem, they can come forward and discuss what's happening and talk with someone and have their concerns addressed. And uh, it's extraordinarily important, I think, that um, we've we've put a lot of things in place. I think at the last meeting, Lisa presented a number of programmatic things that we can do. Uh, but by the same token, you should, you have the program, which is sort of, this is what we're gonna try and do. This is aspirational. This is what we're going to do. But I think there's enough concern that I've seen in the community that we need to look very carefully at this. And this becomes even more important at a time when um, this community and the country obviously have um, some deep-seated divisions that are coming out. So I think it requires a little more of us right now to get in front of what's happening, find out, you know, what we can do better, find out what's really happening versus what we hope may be happening.
Great. Jeff?
Uh, yeah, no, I I I read through the proposal. Um, I think, I think the scope is adequate for for what we're trying to look at. Um, I I would say two things. One is that the initial language, which says to investigate whether any personnel did these specific actions, I would hope that some sort of summary report would also provide contributory uh, policies for environment or other actions and not just say, you know, a person did or did not do something, right? Well, let's, let's, you know, say something did happen. You know, I'd like to have some sort of of background which says they did it, but this was the context and this is why, these are the policies that you should look at to prevent this in the future. Um, and, you know, I don't know if there are summary recommendations as well, if that's appropriate for someone to do this.
That's included in the scope, I believe.
So yeah, I just want to make sure all those are in there as well, particularly the policy piece.
Yeah. Any recommendations, legal analysis and judgments, attorney Kuker shares will be included in the scope. You know, there are obviously some confidentiality requirements in terms of what can be shared publicly and what cannot, based on legal things, but that should be included. If I'm reading this correctly, do you guys agree?
Yep.
Yep. That's good. Okay. Yeah, no, absolutely. Um, and then the other piece on, you know, the the fees look fine. Um, normally in something like this, as you kind of progress and as the initial investigation, you you have some sort of uh, secondary, when the, when the statement is produced, says, look, it it's looking like it's gonna take three months, you know, X number of hours, just some sort of ballpark estimate rather than just an open. So I'm hoping, you know, and I know there's regular, it looks like monthly or so, updates that we're gonna get. So as that that cost and as that scope becomes more clear with the investigators, that we get an update on that as well. Those are the comments I have. Thanks.
Yeah, and I liked, I think, and you were referring to this, Arthur, from their website, that they say their investigators have conducted scores of sexual misconduct, discrimination, and harassment investigations for colleges, universities, secondary schools, and public and private employers. So that's, that's where we want to be.
Right.
So uh, it makes sense to me as well. Um, I don't think this is gonna be something that we're gonna have a quick answer to. I think it's gonna take some time for this investigator and her team to be able to uh, speak to the number of people that uh, hopefully will be willing to come forward for her to speak to and to do a complete and thorough investigation. Um, I mentioned this last time, but once we have a signed agreement with this person, um, we want to make sure that their contact information is available. And I hope that people that have had any concerns and direct issues with anything um, related to this scope will come forward and speak to the investigator because we really can't get any answers without that direct uh, communication.
I want to put this out, and this is literally just a thought I had. Would it be helpful to have a subcommittee of the school committee um, just interface with this, with the investigator before she starts her work to talk about, you know, our thoughts, expectations? Um, again, I'm really thinking off the top of my head here. I don't know if that's, anyone else thinks that's a good idea or not?
I'm wondering if the entire committee can meet with the investigator.
If the entire committee meets, then I think it becomes a public meeting, Mr. Chair. So.
That's why you're the attorney. All right, that makes sense.
I mean, I don't know. I don't know how anyone else feels.
I think that's a good idea. I think it's important enough to to, you know, keep, make sure that this keeps going in the direction it's supposed to go in.
Right.
And, you know, we get, we get the information we need, you know, good, bad, or whatever. So.
Okay, great. So do we need a vote on this to approve any funding? Or are we just in agreement that we're going to move forward?
Andy, you would want to vote to um, enter into the contractual agreement for the independent review?
Okay.
Okay, so I need a motion for that, I guess I?
So I'll move that we enter into the agreement as presented to us with the addition of the word staff in bullet point two.
Number two.
And with Jeff's um, uh, mention, you mentioned recommendations. If that's not already in there, I would add that as well.
I believe it is.
And that's fine. Then I would, I would move that, Mr. Chair.
Yep. Any recommendations, legal analysis, and judgments?
Second.
So, um, because I didn't completely realize we needed a vote, we batted out of order there. So any additional discussion? Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor with moving forward with this contractual agreement with attorney Allison Kuker, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No oppose, so that passes. Dr. Dana?
So, I just, Dave, I'm just wondering, so to Eric's point, are we doing a subcommittee of a couple members to, you know, is that something?
I think it probably makes sense.
I would suggest that we just double-check with that because I believe the subcommittees are also open meetings also.
Oh, true.
Which is still a possibility, but it would be, it's just in a smaller format.
Yeah, that's true.
But we have had, as the chair, Dave has spoken with our school attorney. So it may be that it's Dave and myself that continue to have those conversations to check in.
Yeah. And then we'll be updating every month with whatever information. This is gonna be a regular agenda item for us.
Yes.
So then anyone on the committee should let Dave know if they have any additional uh, so, you know,
Questions, concerns, anything, yeah. That's fine. If that makes sense.
Good.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll move on to student activities account updates.
Thank you. And we need three separate votes. We do this on a yearly basis now. The first one, the superintendent recommends the approval of the yearly list of approved accounts.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes.
Thank you. The next one, the superintendent recommends the approval of the addition of the class of 2024 to the approved yearly list.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes.
Thank you. And the third one, the superintendent recommends the approval of the maximum student activity checking account balances.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That moves, that passes as well.
Thank you. And we have two more items under new business. The next one is our homeschool proposals. The superintendent recommends the approval of the notice of intent for the home education for the 2021 school year for those included in tonight's packet.
Need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? No. All those in favor of the homeschool proposals, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That, those pass as well.
Great, thank you. And next, our MASC, MASs conference update and delegate. This year, it, I believe is virtual this year, but they're still hoping to have their delegate meeting, delegate meeting. So at this time, we normally in, oh, sorry, September, would have the school committee appoint a delegate for this year's meeting.
Do we know, I know the conference is November fourth to the seventh. Do we know when the delegate meeting is, or?
They're still hoping to have it, so we thought at this meeting, if it was the possibility of voting for a delegate, then when we have that information, we'll just be ready to go.
Okay, but during those three days, isn't there one day where voting delegate is needed? Or is it for the entire three days?
There's still, it's, I think the wording that we continue to use, everything with reopening this year is evolving and changing. So the conference is a virtual piece, it's not finalized the schedule.
Okay.
So we don't have that detail as we would normally have for you on a yearly basis.
No problem. Is anyone that's interested in being the delegate?
Yeah, I mean, where it's, it's virtual, I could be willing to do that, but that could work.
Okay.
Thank you.
But Mary Beth, it's virtual and you've done it for years, so.
Yes, but I'm not sure what my schedule's gonna look like in November, so I'm willing to do it. But I, what I've read is that the, I think they're doing it virtually, some workshops that will be free to school committee members. So anyone that wants to, you know, log on can certainly do that. But again, they didn't have a schedule yet for that. But yes, Eric, you can certainly.
Yeah, I don't wanna usurp your, your, cause you've done such a good job through the years.
That's starting nice of you, Mary Beth.
Thank you, Eric. But Eric, we're right ahead this year.
All right, so we have Eric, and then if he needs a backup, if the date doesn't work, I'm sure I can do it.
Thank you.
All right, let's see here. Unfinished business.
Thank you. One item, the superintendent recommends the approval of the proposed 2020, 2021 pre-K to 12 student parent handbooks for a second reading.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? We covered it all in our last meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That moves. We have our order of business. Communications?
Thank you for communications. We keep here every month our North Shore Education Consortium. We have had one meeting last week for the board of directors to get an update on the reopening, which has started. And I also would like to share that the, our Recovery High School, as part of our consortium, and the, an independent filmmaker came forward and wanted to do a program, and it ended up being with MTV in the end. So that is now being aired. I think there have been two episodes to, so far, and there is a total of six episodes. It's playing on Tuesday evenings, but it really gives a very good view as to how the Recovery High School works and the support that we have with, for our students throughout the North Shore.
Yeah, I read about that, I think in the Salem News. Really interesting. So I'm looking forward to watching that. Legislation, Eric?
I did communicate with Representative Spiliotis's office, and he says, hi, Eric, I know the governor's office and legislature are trying to offer as much assistance as possible as most communities begin their school year this week. DESE forwarded me the guidance paper they sent out today reiterating DPH and their commitment to provide a rapid response unit, and we've talked about that. DESI, in the same communication, requested each district report if a student, faculty, or staff member has tested positive. And I'm sure we'll be doing that. And they make a point that it's, it's anonymous. We don't have to give names, just let them know if we have a positive test. He says that the summer revenue figures have been very positive. However, they do reflect the unexpectedly high amount of money they collected from taxpayers that waited until the first two weeks of July to pay their taxes. The month's revenue figures ought to provide us with a much better, I mean, this month, revenue figures ought to provide us with a much better understanding on how we will proceed with drafting a budget for November first and beyond. Please take care. I wish you, the members of the committee, and the entire district, the very best in the days and weeks to come.
Great, thank you. Deep, Mary Beth?
Deep originally had a meeting scheduled for this Wednesday, but with the start of school and trying to find how we were going to meet, we postponed our meeting until September 30th. So on September 30th, we will hold a Deep meeting virtually, and that information will be available on the Deep website as well as our Facebook page. But just trying to get a handle on what this year looks like for Deep as well, so.
Great. Jeff, Danvers Cares?
So Danvers Cares, we had a meeting this morning, which was, was timely. September is National Suicide Prevention Month. And so I'd just like to remind the community that what we discussed today is that there are resources and there is help available. So if you go to danverscares.org, if you know someone who is struggling with mental health, depression, suicide, there is help available. So please, please check that out. And if you have any questions, definitely, definitely reach out.
Great, thank you. CPAC?
CPAC, we have the meeting coming up on Monday with our CPAC, and again, wanna thank our two co-chairs from CPAC who were very active with our reopening committee over the summer.
Great. Policy, Arthur, we have nothing, correct?
We have nothing.
Excellent. And Eric, the Danvers Human Rights and Inclusion Committee?
The, next, the upcoming meeting is actually September 24th, Thursday. I believe it will still be virtual, but I'm not 100% sure of that. The most recent activity was that the, the commission, committee rather, got together just before the special selectmen's meeting two Wednesdays ago and prepared a statement, a very lengthy statement that was sent to the selectmen, and then a shorter statement that was read at that meeting, which related to the questions surrounding the blue line flag and its impact on the community. And obviously, it's a, it was a critical issue at the time, and they responded accordingly. And I don't know if there'll be more to come on that particular issue on November 24th, I mean, September 24th, but it wouldn't surprise me.
Great. All right, I'm gonna stay with you for the minute.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve and release the minutes from the August 24th, 2020 regular meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Keith, budget and donations?
So we actually cover the student activity accounts that are listed here above. No donations this month, and then next month we'll have our normal three reports for you. So we'll have our final budget report from FY '20. We'll have our budget transfers report to become our operating budget to start this fiscal year, and then our first monthly budget report.
Great. And personnel?
The monthly report, you'll see that some miscellaneous appointments as we're getting closer to starting the year, as well as leave of absences, which are primarily exciting ones for our teachers as they welcome new little people into their families. And then we would like to highlight that we do have a number of teacher aide openings at the moment. So if any of our community members are interested, please see the posting on SchoolSpring and put in an application.
Great. Any questions or comments from anyone on the committee, or from the administration? No, our next meeting is October 19th, and I believe that is it. Good night, Danvers.
Great.
Oh, you need a motion to adjourn.
I need a motion to adjourn. Do not go anywhere, Danvers.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn.